All right. So, welcome, welcome, welcome. So, this is the Education and Youth Committee Hearing. I am Councilman Zeke Cohen, Chair of the Committee. I am joined today by Council President Scott. Also with us is Councilman Christopher Burnett, Councilman Leon Pinkett, Councilman John Bullock, from the President's Office, Dominic McNally, as well as Jennifer Coats. We are joined tonight by city school staff, Dr. Sonia Santalisis and her team, as well as DeWanna Stewart. From the General Counsel, Rebecca Simmons is with us. And we, tonight, are going to hear about the plan for next semester as we head back to school in an all-virtual format. This hearing, I believe, is on Charm TV. We're also streaming. So, if anyone is interested in testifying, you're going to raise your hand and you will eventually be called on. The format for the hearing tonight, we're going to open up a few remarks by myself and President Scott. Then we'll hear directly from a student representative. Then we'll hear from Dr. Santalisis. We'll hear from Damonte Brown, President of the Baltimore Teachers Union. We'll hear from Jessica Fontleroy from the Parent Community Advisory Board. And then we will open up to public testimony and hear from community. This hearing is really an opportunity for the school system, Dr. Santalisis and her team, to present. It's also an opportunity to, for community, to provide feedback. And for all of our stakeholders, teachers, parents, students, staff, city council members, and all of us to work together toward the best possible next year that we can have. I know, coming into this hearing, when we had scheduled it, there was conversation about coming into the school year with a hybrid model. We have since shifted. And Dr. Santalisis is going to speak about coming into the fall all-virtual. And I just want to say, this is not, by any means, an easy decision. We know that, for our most vulnerable children, that learning online has been extremely difficult. We have faced large challenges with the digital divide and young people not having access to computers or devices, or even internet. We know that, when children are home, it leads to an uptick in child abuse and unmet trauma. And it is really hard for families. And I know this because I've got a young person of my own. I've got a kid. It's really tough for parents to be, to have to navigate online school and deal with the challenges of having a kid or having multiple children that need to learn while simultaneously having to work. It's been very, very, very stressful for parents. It's also hard for teachers. Teachers have gone above and beyond during this pandemic to try to reach their students. But it is a tough and challenging time for everyone. So, we know that this was not an easy decision. I do believe it was the right decision. Public health and human health have to come first. We know that this virus is a monster and that we all have a role in mitigating and diminishing its impact. And the final thing before turning it over to President Scott is just to say that this is an all-in moment for Baltimore. That whether you are a city councilperson or a teacher or a parent, whether you're a Democrat or a Republican, we have got to be all-in for our kids. This is going to be hard. It is not easy to learn online. It is not. There are innumerable challenges that we are facing heading into the year. And so, my hope is that we all, as a city, are able to pull together and support our children and that this is a mandate for all of us to prioritize young people because it's going to be tough. With that, I'm going to turn it over to President Scott for some remarks.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman, and good evening, everyone. And thank you for hosting this most important informational hearing. Let me start off by saying thank you to our teachers and our staff and the school system and all the others who have gone above and beyond to keep our students on track as much as possible. We're doing this critical in this unforeseen tough time. I also want to thank you to the parents who had to step up in a different way and help educate our children. And we know, as Councilman Cohen said, how hard it has been on them to be put in a position where they are having to do things that many of them are just not accustomed to doing and having to understand how we have to come together as a family. And also, but most importantly, I want to say thank you to the most important people in the system, our young people, for persevering through something that no other class, no generation in quite a long time has had to face. And being able to do that and being the resilient, wonderful, bright young people that they are, even if it meant missing things like prom and graduation and sports season, they have remained strong throughout this crisis and throughout their inability to be in school and be around their friends. We all know that we're in a tough position. We are trying to simultaneously prioritize education and the safety of our students, our teachers, and our faculty and the rest of our staff. I want to commend Dr. Santalisis and the School Board for being thoughtful and making the decision in the way that they did about starting school. But, as the Councilman, in a virtual way, as the Councilman said, this is a moment of reckoning, really, for Baltimore. We know the issues that exist and for our young people in our communities from the digital divide, issues at home. We know what we're all going to have to do. This is an opportunity for us in this crisis of COVID-19, for us to start to deal with some of the systematic issues that were already there, but also start to reimagine how we can do education in our city to begin with. We have to think about that, especially right now because these challenges are real. But I know that working together, that we all will be able to make sure that we are providing the support needed for our students and our families for the drive. So, thank you, Mr. Councilman. I wouldn't say before, I was planning to be in the hearing between 5:00 and 6:00 tonight. But I have another thing coming up in a few minutes. So, I'm going to have to jump off. My staff will be here. And I know you're in great hands with the Councilman as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Do want to also acknowledge Matt Stegman from the Mayor's Office. Thank you for jumping on. So, the way tonight's hearing is going to proceed, we're, in the tradition of the Education and Youth Committee, going to first hear from students about their experiences. We're then going to turn it over to Dr. Santalise to present on the school system's perspective. We're then going to turn it to Damonte Brown from the Teachers Union and then Jessica Fontleroy from the Parent Community Advisory Board. In between each speaker, council members will have an opportunity to ask questions. If you do want to be recognized, please either raise your hand or indicate that you'd like to speak. We'll then hear from community testimony. So, with that, I'm going to turn it directly over to Anaya Taylor to offer her perspective as a student. Anaya, can you hear, can you hear me?
Oh, hi. I'm sorry. I thought Yoshi was going first, so I wasn't ready. Yoshi, would you like to go first?
Yashira, would you like to, would you like to go first?
Oh, I love you so much. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
All right. All right, Yashira. Take it away.
Okay. Well, good afternoon, everyone. I'm Yashira, but everyone else likes to, I like to go by Yoshi. I'm a rising senior at Baltimore City College. And even before I started off, I keep wanting to say that. Thank you for having me on this council meeting. And I'm really excited to share my experience during the pandemic. And I think I'll start off by talking about how things have been for me. And if I'm being honest, this quarantine has opened up so many great opportunities for me. I honestly didn't have any talents besides helping my four cousins with their homework. They don't speak English. And I had to help them out with their assignments and sending on to their computers that were lent to them by the school in our neighborhood. So, that was one of the challenges on the side. But for me personally, I think during this quarantine, I think it brought out a different side of me. And I say that because I work with this team called SOMO that my school stands for Student Organizing a Multicultural Society. And we were involved in fighting for digital equity and better internet access. And because of that site, because of, yeah, because of that site, I was brought into this amazing job opportunity with Digital Harbor Foundation. And it definitely put myself in a position where I had to be the best of myself, no matter what. And it happened while school was in session. So, I could definitely say that with the job on the side and with school assignments, I was definitely way more productive than when I was in school. And it's funny that I say that because, you know, you got a, you're home. And you'd expect some students to not be that way. But I guess that's how it was for me. At first, though, before I got the job, it was pretty difficult because it was the first week of the quarantine. And I had a lot of free time. I didn't know what I could do, et cetera. And I was really lazy in the sense of completing my assignment. But once I was put in a position of responsibility, I had to step things up. And I completed my assignments in no time. And ever since that job opportunity was given to me, I've just been on a roll personally. I've become a better leader. I've learned so many skills that I know will help me in the future when I go to college, since I'm planning to do social work. I've learned how to communicate better with others. I've learned so many crucial skills that I feel like could be shared with other students around our state, around the whole world, if they were given the same opportunity as me. So, I had pretty good internet access at home. I have an adorable computer at home, but others don't. So, if students in the state had some kind of connection to the internet and something to connect it with, then they'd probably be in the space where I am now. And in terms of how I feel about the school year coming up, you know, it's my senior year. I won't be able to experience any of the good stuff my previous senior graduates were able to experience. Although, we are having senior portraits this week. That's something I'm excited about. But we won't be able to experience it the same way previous graduates did. And although it does make me really sad, what matters most to me is that my friends and family are safe and that they get to stay home and healthy. And I just think that if I have to stay at home for it, then it's on by me personally. Personally, I think if we have to stay at home for it, then it's okay. And it's something that I, probably Anaya might be able to say the same. I'm not sure. But yeah, I think that's all I have to say for now.
Thank you, Shira. And thanks for your work on helping us to close the digital divide and all your advocacy. With that, going to turn it over to Anaya Taylor.
Hello?
Yep, we got you.
All right. Hi, guys. And I'm here. Nice to talk to you guys. I want to first, like you said, thank you guys for, you know, opening up these spaces for having or allowing me to get to speak. I think it's very important that we're able to do these kind of things. So, I really appreciate it. And yeah, so I've got two minutes. I think that for me, when we decided to go virtual, it was unexpected. And so, it was a very hard, it was very hard adapting. I think for me, like Yashira said, we are getting a lot of things taken away from us because of everything that's happening. And while it's frustrating, it's very needed. So, I appreciate that we're able to do virtual learning because, you know, I would not want to go back to school just because, you know, it's not safe. My biggest concern for students throughout the summer are students that have to go without. I know for me, like, for a while, I did not, my laptop broke, so I didn't have a laptop for a while. And then we were able to get the laptops, but we're only able to do, like, certain things, like summer school or, like, specific tasks. You can't walk into your email and stuff like that, like your regular email, through the laptops provided by the school. So, it was very hard for me to do things like for school, checking my email and stuff. So, it was hard adjusting to that as well, having to do everything on my phone versus the things with the laptop. I think my biggest concern moving forward is having things that are, like, people having things. I think that, you know, having the resources that we all need, like, not only, like, just the laptops and stuff like that, but like the therapeutic resources. Like, how will it be the same? Because, you know, some people, like, you don't get healing and stuff through, like, a virtual laptop screen. So, students who need that, who need the social workers and stuff like that. That's my biggest concern. I know I have a really good relationship with my school worker and my teachers. And so, only having that virtually is probably, like, the biggest concern for me is having, how do we keep that connection that we have with our staff members that we do have a good connection with? And for those who don't have that, like, how are they getting help? Like, what is being put in place so that they have the resources that they need? Whether it be small groups of socially-distanced talks with the social workers on Tuesdays and Thursdays, I think that there should be something in place physically. Of course, with the health standards that, making sure that's up to par. But there should be some type of physical sense for students who need that because I think it's very, very important that we still have that moving throughout because, you know, some people can't really function without that. Okay. I think I went a minute over two minutes. But yeah, that's my biggest thing is the resources and how that works. Thank you.
Thank you, Anaya. And thank you for all your leadership and showing us what peaceful, powerful protest looks like that's led by young people for justice. All right. So, great, as always, to hear from students. With that, I'm going to turn it over to our school CEO, Dr. Sonia Santalisis.
Good evening, Councilman Cohen and Council President and all the council members that are on the call, all of the families that are on the call, everyone who's tuned in. And a big shout out to both Shira and Anaya just for their student voice. And many thanks, Councilman Cohen. You and the Education Subcommittee have been consistent in making sure that student voice bleeds out. And I think it is a grounding practice that I just want to let you know I appreciate. So, I know I have a few minutes. And I know that there will be questions. So, I want to make sure that I work through this, excuse me, now. And then, more than happy to take some questions. So, by way of getting started, if we move to the first slide. Let's see. Am I moving the slides or someone else?
I believe you can.
I believe Ms. Coats said that someone at Council Services would be moving them.
Okay. Wonderful. Thanks so much. So, just by way of quick review and some information, because I know we have people who might be tuning into this hearing who don't have some of the background that others do. But just by way of overview, there's been kind of four major areas, four key components for our recovery planning in city schools. You'll see, first and foremost, as both you heard, Councilman Cohen and the Council President reference, Council President Scott referenced, we have taken into account health and safety for both students and staff. Also, the need to support all stakeholders in adapting to the new reality because the fact of the matter is, school is not going to look the same as it did earlier in March for quite a while. Also, continuing to go deeply in really thinking through what are some of the new ways that we have to think about accelerating student learning and thriving? We heard very loud and clear from families that they overwhelmingly appreciated the heavy lift that educators made during the really surprise, turn-on-a-dime closure we had to make in March. But how do we build on some of those successes and actually improve and build on that as we move forward? And then the fourth is really strong operational functions, all of the pieces that have to come together around facilities preparedness, transportation, food, internet, all of those. So, excuse me, IT. So, those are the four major areas of recovery planning. If we move through to the next slide, I just briefly want to share with folks who may not be aware, we really looked at three phases of planning, the fully remote learning phase that everyone experienced in March. There's also the hybrid model, which is medium-term recovery. And one of the big, I think, distinguishers about the hybrid model is that there is social distancing in place. But we knew that it was going to need to be a combination of in-person and virtual learning for a while. And then also Phase Three, the new normal. What does school need to look like over the long term, given some of the other challenges that we faced? And you'll notice just some other pictures of other publications from national leaders in this area, both with regards to health and education, that we also saw it as reference and really to inform some of our planning. So, those are also recommendations for folks that might be interested. And as Dr. Salmon referenced in the press conference that just completed, also really being guided by the Maryland State Department's guidance with regards to a reopening framework. So, you will see that there. As we move into where we are now, and we can advance to the next slide, as we move into where we are now, as everyone heard, we took stakeholder engagement very seriously. We had our representation on all of our work streams of some of the following groups that you will see there. We actually had over 16,000 parents and family members, caregivers respond to a more extensive survey about both the spring, as well as some of their reflections and desires moving forward, which families would be interested in which models. You'll see some of the work groups. We had work groups, work streams, also focus groups because we knew that even though we had, for example, over 16,000 families respond, we had, excuse me, at least two polls of teachers and additional staff. What we also knew was that there were some families that frankly would not be easily reached through either an internet-based or virtual space and feedback, or even just phone calls. And so, our staff held in-person focus groups additionally with families in-person in areas where we know that we needed to have additional representation across the city. So, this is just a stakeholder engagement, quick overview, so that folks know what took place before then. Now, if we move into, again, next slide, where we are now, as I'm sure by now, everyone has heard, but I will restate the proposal that we are submitting to the Board of Commissioners is to begin the school year after Labor Day. So, to move the beginning of the school year to September 8th to provide additional learning opportunities for educators, for teachers, for school leaders. And then, we will be beginning our school year, starting school, like other jurisdictions, virtually. That means that there is a heavy lift to do in making sure. And I think we heard very eloquently from our, from our young people, very powerfully from them, the importance of taking into account and preparation, yes, for virtual learning, but also the other components that go into virtual, that it is absolutely about a need for every student to have access to the devices that they need. Want to thank City Council, the City Council President, Councilman Cohen, and frankly, the young people for their work in supporting that effort, the additional $3 million, as well as frankly, a good amount of resources that were raised across Baltimore City, both everyday citizens in Baltimore, as well as the philanthropic community that also contributed, that have enabled us to not only distribute 20,000 devices before the end of school, but also to have close to another 30,000, 35,000 devices that are on order now and are already coming in and already being distributed. I think the other piece here is that we will be communicating with families on October 16th because we did have about half of our families. We're very clear that they wanted nothing but a virtual option. But frankly, we also had another half of our families that wanted some kind of in-person access to learning for their young people. So, we will be looking to see within that timeframe, the October 16th, that I believe the state superintendent referenced in the most recent press conference, to take another evaluation to see what other learning opportunities we might be able to provide. We have targeted, even in our summer school, those young people, and I believe it was Shira who referenced the fact that we know there are young people who did not connect easily, not just because of the device, but because of connection with adults. We have heard from families, we had an option for our summer school for a very limited number of in-person summer school options where there's social distancing in place. We heard from families some of their feedback about that. And frankly, families who knew that their young people needed more. Also, the, you know, we took, there was, you know, we asked for teachers who would be willing to participate in that program, who have done so and just been doing wonderful support of young people. And so, part of the consideration for the hybrid model is quite frankly, how do we provide in small group setting? And again, getting feedback from some of the teachers who are in that program, from the families, around numbers, the social distancing we have in place. We're investing close to $3 million to change air filters around buildings and other things that are in place. The feedback that we're getting is we know that all young people have not been well-served in a virtual setting. And so, how are we creatively working with our community and working with those who frankly are able to be in that kind of setting, to be able to have small group experiences? And how do we target those young people for a variety of reasons? For example, some of our students with disabilities that we know really do need more in-person time. How do we do that safely? How do we have far more of a runway? How do we, you know, really support the need to make sure that we are being creative in, as well as safe? I want to give a big shout out to Commissioner Deraza and her team, who have just been wonderful with all that they are doing to keep our city healthy. They have worked with us. They've reviewed plans. The team that we have been partnering with at no cost with Johns Hopkins University P. with at no cost, with Johns Hopkins University pediatricians and epidemiologists, to really look at what are the safe practices that need to be in place, while at the same time, hearing from those families, those staff, who frankly are comfortable primarily with, as I think both Councilman Cohen has stated, as well as the Council President have stated, that we do know that safety is important. And so, that is why we were beginning virtually, why we did not, why we made the decision to do that, but also recognizing that it is possible to have steps towards safe, small-group options that target frankly, our most needy students. And that we've had community members who are stepping up with their own ideas and ways to support, that I think really does point to something that both Councilman Cohen and Council President Scott said, and that is, this is the time for Baltimore City to rally around our children creatively and safely, acknowledge that there are ways that we can begin to be able to meet some of those needs. So, that is where we are now. I believe that is the last slide. And I think I'm in under 10 minutes, Councilman Cohen. I hope I stayed within my timeframe. Oh, thank you. Sorry, proposed timeline and calendar before I turn it over. This slide here is very much a quick overview. That last slide was really a quick overview to help communicate where we are in terms of our milestones. So, now, with the announcement of a virtual open, we are, excuse me, we will now be at the upcoming board meeting, rolling out more detail in terms of what our plan is right now to get feedback, but we will be rolling much of that out at our upcoming school board meeting. Also, we will still be taking some of our lessons from summer school, some of our ideas and suggestions from educators and others around, again, some of the small group hybrid options that I referenced earlier for our most vulnerable students. And again, keeping with the real equity frame that I know the council has been focused on for years, at least since I have been CEO, and that is having some real frank discussions about the full needs of Black and Brown students throughout our cities, throughout our city, as well as all students. And then you will also see that we will have the steps and make sure that we are communicating with families by fall. Our request that we, that the board will vote on with regards to a calendar shift would then put the start date at September 8th. That proposal will include front-loading some of the teacher professional development that traditionally begins, that traditionally takes place throughout the year to move up towards the beginning of the year during that delayed start, because we're hearing overwhelmingly from most educators that they want additional support around being prepared, not just to be online and not just to do virtual learning, but to be able to really benefit, be able to work in a way that they have professional learning opportunities to really be able to provide the quality of learning experiences that we know they most want to provide for our young people. So, with that, with the proposed timeline and calendar, I will turn it back to you, Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Dr. Santelisas, and thank you for your presentation. Also, do want to shout out Chief Tina Heig Hubbard, who has been really extraordinary in the distribution of the digital devices, has just done a ton of work. And also, of course, our teachers, who have also been hustling and just working incredibly hard despite extremely difficult circumstances to get in contact with their students, in some cases to literally go to houses and put devices in the hands of children under a very difficult set of circumstances. A lot of people have really, really, really stepped up during this crisis. Of course, Don Monte and the union and all the advocacy they've done for closing the digital divide as well. So, with that, questions for Dr. Santelisas, as well as the students? Counsel, going to start off with Councilman Pinkett.
Thank you, Chairman Cohen. And thank you, Dr. Santelisas, for all of your work and passion and commitment for all of our children. You and your team should be commended. The first question I wanted to ask is, and I think this is for both the students and Dr. Santelisas, is, one, obviously, this is a big adapting for our teachers as well, you know, having to be able to provide instruction in this virtual environment. And so, I wanted to hear a little bit about the supports that are being provided for the teachers, so that they can adapt, you know, to this new virtual setting. But then also, I wanted to hear from the students, from their perspective, how do they think the teachers are doing as it relates to, you know, being able to provide that same level of quality instruction that they're custom receiving, you know, in the classroom setting?
Um, I'd say personally, well, for one, for the first question, I think, just because even on the student side, as far as like teachers getting support, I know I've been reaching out to my teachers to see how we, like as students and as the district can support them. And it's really like, I really think it comes down to just talking to the teachers. I don't think that happens a lot. I think it's more like, when it comes to like the professional development, it's more so talking to the teachers and, you know, instructing them more so than having a conversation, where teachers are the ones that spend the most time with us. So, in turn, it's really, it should be them, you know, instructing on how to make it a safe environment for the entire climate. So, I think really just discussing with teachers and talking to teachers and seeing where they're at is a really important part of, one, making sure the teachers are okay and supporting the teachers at a time that they don't understand, but also making sure that the students will get the support they need because the teachers are informed or because the teachers are talking. I think if one hand washes the other in this sense, is that if we are taking care of the teachers when the teachers can't turn, take care of the students, because it really does come down to making sure that like, if the teachers are tired, they're going to be tired and they're going to, you know, show that in their work. And so, we want to make sure that we're not missing them when we're talking to them and when we're helping them, especially teachers of color, because, you know, this is a time, this is a very important time right now for all people of color, especially Black. So, making sure that we're not only supporting our Black students as well, supporting our Black students, we're supporting our Black teachers as well, making sure they're okay and that they're where they need to be as far as teaching, but also as far as just like headspace.
Thanks, Anaya. It's a really important point. Shara, anything you want to add?
Um, no, she took everything out of my mouth. Yeah, you gotta, gotta make sure our teachers are supported during this time.
Excellent. And Dr. Santelisas?
Sure, no. And I think part of the place where, you know, to Anaya's point, part of what we're seeing in some of the preparation for the professional learning is, one, we heard loud and clear for, you know, from teachers that choice matters, right? The ability to not just kind of be chiseled into professional learning that's all the same, but in our professional learning, at the end of the school year, the ability to have a choice about where you want to do your learning was one of the things that we heard was really important. And I think that's one of the things we're building in. Number two, what we heard overwhelmingly, and I got a number of emails from teachers that are appreciated, and I think this gets to Anaya's point and the point that I have heard, when I've heard directly from teachers, is the, frankly, the stress and the strain that many of us are, have been under during this period. And so, one of the things that the team worked hard to do was to partner with some community organizations, even our own central team, to really develop wellness opportunities. So, for example, one of the days at the end of the year for professional learning was really focused on wellness and wellness, both for teachers as well as teachers trying to plan for wellness for their students. We also heard, moving into the fall, that teachers wanted more opportunities to know, well, virtually, how do I, for example, think more creatively about how to create that space in a virtual environment? We had one professional learning experience around Juneteenth, because that was the day it was professional learning. That was an example that I got so many emails, like, I got shut out of the Juneteenth session, right? Because again, our country was in the middle of, you know, really dealing with the latest examples of racial unrest in the middle of a pandemic. And a large number of teachers, particularly our African-American teachers, appreciated being able to be in a space that was focused on processing all of that at the same time. So, I think that's important. And then also, we have teacher leaders this summer that are working on, what do the first 30 days need to look like, right? To not just immediately rush back to, okay, now, open up and, you know, let's do, you know, let's do some exercises, but also, what does it need to look like from what they know about students? So, I think this overall theme of teacher leadership, and I've had a chance to talk to some of the folks who are part of that work, really needs to be more of the driver because, you know, absolutely, it's got to be a combination of both. But we also know, for example, I've heard teachers that are like, I hope I don't have to wait until the end of August for the contractual days to be able to learn. And we heard that as well. So, one of the things we're going to be doing is actually standing up optional professional learning, beginning in August, because we know there are teachers, you know, as you've both said, who have lifted amazing amounts of work. And, you know, they're not looking for four days before school to do professional learning. They, they want to do that ahead of time. So, I think part of our real charge is, one, making space for those teacher leaders. We've really tried to do that over the summer in terms of who's guiding a lot of that work. And some of our teachers frankly, who have been, who did an amazing job in virtual learning, are the ones that are actually teaching other teachers. So, one of my favorite examples is one of our teachers who ended up teaching a number of classes because she was so successful online. She's now teaching other teachers how to do that this summer. And that's far more effective than frankly, me standing in front of teachers trying to say, oh, these are the components. It carries in a very different way, you know, when they hear from Ms. Ford, right? Because she actually was successful, she did it, and she knows more about the day-to-day experience. So, we are putting those in place. And it's part of frankly, you know, why we knew it was important to start virtually, so that teachers had the space to be able to do that, knowing that, you know, the duress of trying to navigate this crisis, the health challenge, as well as a lot of the racial unrest that people are still trying to process, is, is actually needs to be part of that. So, I'd say those are some of the things that we're doing.
Thank you, Dr. Santelisas. And Chairman Cohen, if I can ask one more question, and then you can catch me back up as you come back around. One of the slides in the presentation mentioned accelerated learning. Is there a plan to make up for, you know, the losses that I would assume that many of our students have suffered through the spring and, you know, the typical losses during the summer? I would imagine, like you said, that we got to go gradually into this new environment, but then we do have to have some expediency to make certain that our young people are staying on grade level and staying where they need to be.
No, absolutely, Councilman. And so, just a couple of things in that, in that area. One, we have been working with our curriculum partners to make, and with some of our lead teachers who really understand the curriculum depth, to be able to say, okay, which, which high-leverage skills or competencies do we need to focus on, right? Because we know that's part of acceleration. But then also, we're really excited about some partnering we're doing with local college students, so Baltimore City College students, to be able to help tutor students virtually, one-on-one, some of that extra time, which we think is just going to be very powerful, Councilman, to have Baltimore City College students working with Baltimore City K-12 students on things like math, right? So, having engineering students working with students in math. And that, that can be extended daytime. That's not necessarily the, during the day instructional time. We've also had a number of conversations with Black membership organizations across the city to say, what are some additional opportunities? Because, you know, and again, I think that's a Baltimore distinctive, right? That Baltimoreans have asked, how do we support our young people? And so, what we're doing is moving to organize that. We have virtual platforms. And then, the final thing I would say is, we heard from parents and families, we want to be able to help our own children accelerate, right? Even over the summer. So, our virtual academy was really focused on those students who were furthest behind. And we're going to leverage all this technology that we invested in, right? And so, there'll be opportunities after school hours in ways that we couldn't, we knew that there was, you know, technology and hotspot distribution. And that is within the technology itself, parents will be able to see, this is where my student is, and maybe 30 minutes extra a day on these skills that they are behind in, just 30 minutes of extra practice actually helps do some of that catch-up. And like, one of my favorites is for our early learners, just, you know, we have one of our partners where just 20 minutes a day extra at home can help with some of those early reading skills that are built into the program and help us isolate where young people might need some extra support and actually individualize it. So, it's not just run through these 10 programs, but it's based on the student's profile. These are some areas where some extra support would be available virtually as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Santelisas. Thank you, Chairman Cohen.
Thank you, Councilman. Other council folks want to jump in? Seeing none currently. Dr. Santelisas, we know that in addition to the physical suffering that the coronavirus is causing, we're also seeing a devastating toll on mental health. Now, you and I have talked before, parents and families are stressed out, children are struggling without being in regular contact with their teachers and coaches and school social workers and all the rest. And we know that unfortunately, in this and in any pandemic, we see a rise in child abuse and a simultaneous decrease in reports of child abuse, largely because there are less mandated reporters, you know, folks are not able to check in as much as is possible. How are we thinking about welcoming our students back into school from a social and emotional perspective, both in the virtual learning time as we head into the fall? And then, as you and your team and city schools starts to think about the hybrid model, what supports are being put in place particularly to support our most vulnerable young people? Young people who may be dealing with homelessness or housing insecurity? Young people who may have learning challenges? What supports are we putting into place to provide a net of support for our young people who are struggling in this moment?
No, and I, and I thank you, Councilman Cohen, because, you know, one of the things that I have said is that bracket, Black and Brown lives are our whole lives. Children lead whole lives. So, there is absolutely the need to attend to their physical safety, but there is also a need to attend to their emotional and, you know, dare I say, spiritual safety as well, right? And, and what that actually looks like. So, a couple of things. One, excuse me, we will continue to support telemedicine, virtual counseling, those kinds of things that we launched in the, the spring, that we frankly learned a lot about, right? So, there were some things within the virtual space that worked well, there were others that were not. One of the things that we also know is, even within our summer school program, even with small groups of six, seven students, one of the things families are telling us is that, you know, while they might not be comfortable with 20 students, right, and full return to school, that some of their young people, Councilman, just needed And, and full return to school, that some of their young people, Councilman, just needed that interaction. And so, you know, there were, there were kids and parents crying when they got to come back and actually, you know, see a friend. And even though they were six feet apart and there were only six of them, right? What that looks like and, and what that did. And parents who were full because they knew that their young people needed at least some of that human touch point. And then, for example, some of our high school students that had just not connected at all and the need to be much more creative and how we're reaching some of those, some of those young people, some of whom, you know, to your point, were disconnected even before the pandemic, right? Were even more so after. And so we actually have partnered with some community organizations to just put shoe leather to the pavement and actually find kids. We have one of our favorites, Roger Shaw, who works with us, who actually has gone out with his team, very much like the teachers you referenced earlier, to actually, you know, find kids. And we have partners who do that. But I think the other piece that we're learning is that, to your point, and I know this is dear to your heart, a lot of what we are finding when those families are coming in, even in small settings, is the need to have a holistic approach. So our community schools coordinators, I want to give a shout out to them during this crisis because a lot of times it's food insecurity, it's housing insecurity, you know, you can't be housing insecure and then expect a child to just effortlessly, effortlessly log on. And so the community schools approach, I think we, we have, or have really leveraged during this time period, will continue to do that. And then finally, what I would say is, a lot of the teachers and central office folks who are planning that kind of first 30 days that I referenced, really is, how do we have an integrated approach to what students are first experiencing, where they actually have space to share? Like, we still have students who have not had the chance to fully process what we, as a country, witnessed, but through the murder of George Floyd, right? And so we can't re-enter school and not acknowledge that that has taken place and that young people are going to need to process. So we're looking at the social emotional health, we're looking at what, what does the actual space look like in terms of the conversations, right? So, you know, we have to make sure that teachers feel comfortable going into small groups on Zoom and Google Teams if we're going to be able to have some of those discussions. But we are frankly, and this will be part of what we roll out in our presentation to the board, we're prioritizing target groups of students. We know students with disabilities were particularly challenged during this period. We know our English language learners were particularly challenged. And so those groups of young people and their families are prioritized. They're the ones that we were contacting for summer school first, and they will be the ones prioritized in any shift to hybrid. So you're absolutely right. It's why, you know, attending to both adult and student needs in those early days from the mental health perspective is going to continue to be incredibly important.
I think that's going to be really critical. And I think that, you know, you've got both on the staff and the student side, some real leaders within Baltimore, community folks as well, who I think are really going to be charged up to do that work. And I think specifically since she's on this hearing, you know, Anaya, who's really one of the leaders around the movement that's been going on and has just done extraordinary work in sort of thinking and helping her peers process this moment that we're in. And so would definitely encourage you all to connect because I know she'd have ideas.
And we, and we can make sure that, that Rashad Stanton reaches out because we do have groups of young people that are coming together. And to your point, it makes sense
Yeah.
to loop Anaya. Yay, see? Are you part of that already, Anaya?
Well, um, the, I don't know. I've been told of like, I remember briefly talking about a leadership board or something of that to the students. We talked about it very, very briefly.
Good.
Said that we would catch up on it, but you know.
Good, because we're going to snag you now that Councilman Cohen has volunteered you.
Okay.
All right, so we're going to do that. Make sure we loop you in because I do think, Councilman Cohen, you're, you're absolutely right about that. And, and it's part of why frankly, some of the best feedback and ideas I get still come from young people and from emails directly from teachers. So very much appreciate that.
Uh, Dr. Santalisis?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, just, I don't know if it's a question or something, but I will say that earlier you were talking about the issue with some of the parents wanting kids to go back to school. I know that a big issue in certain communities is the economics of it, not having enough money to really feed their kid for the four, eight hours that they would be in school and things of that nature. So I know that with different communities that are getting the donations for foods and food banking and stuff like that, helping, I know that Liberty Rec Center gives out food every day. And so I think doing more of that with the different restaurants and going to like, you know, checking up on the families that aren't up to par or don't have the resources that they have doing that would probably put them more at ease for not being physically in school. But I guess that's something that we can talk about later in a time.
No, absolutely. And we should follow up, Anaya, because that's one of the things we're thinking, we were, actually, we were working on today is really working through with some of the economic challenges, what, what will our food and nutrition program look like moving ahead? So you're asking that question at the perfect time, perfect time.
Great. And I do appreciate, of course, the work that you and your team have done, as well as Tisha Edwards from the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success around, you know, really a difficult task, which is food distribution in a city that, again, before the virus, struggled with food insecurity, knowing that we've been tasked and you all and our rec centers and all of us have been tasked with ensuring folks aren't going hungry. And do appreciate Mayor Young, as part of that bill that we passed, the $3 million for the digital divide, there was also $6 million for food that he really pushed for. Because again, we know that if we're not feeding our children and our families, then we are fundamentally failing as a city. That's important work.
Well, and Councilman Cohen, I will just say, I think Baltimore City stands out in the state with regards to the cross-agency effort. I spoke to colleagues in other jurisdictions who were surprised by the level of cross-city collaboration around the feeding of families and young people. And you're right to shout out, you know, Tisha Edwards and Reginald Moore from Wreckin' Parks, just the folks. So I will just say that that was a Baltimore City distinctive. That was not true in every jurisdiction. And you and the mayor and the full city council, city council president, you all should feel very proud of the cross-agency work that you did in that.
Which is not always the narrative that gets told about us, so.
Oh, that's why I'm saying it now. That's why I'm saying it now.
That. So my last question for you, just in thinking about physical infrastructure, again, we know that we've got some of the oldest buildings in the state. Clearly, some of the health concerns revolve around some of our buildings not having air conditioning and not having proper ventilation and challenges with, you know, where I used to teach, the windows couldn't open. So we know that it's real and that the disparities and the inequities around school infrastructure is just further elevated by the pandemic. I'm wondering, there was a New York Times article the other day about outdoor school and how in New York, after a previous pandemic, they moved schooling outside. Have we, are you starting to think about, as we approach potentially the hybrid model, having school outside? Obviously, that poses a number of complications and challenges as well, but it does seem like, you know, something that just given how this virus works and how it is, is far more challenging when groups of people are inside versus when they're outside? Are we starting to think about having school and classes outside?
Yes. No, 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 we absolutely have. And we actually did a deep discussion on some, you know, research on tents, seeing which school building spaces could be used. You know, we could use outdoor space, some of our 21st century schools. One that actually is a, is a summer learning site that we deliberately, and you know this, Councilman, deliberately built in, kind of outside stadium-like space for students. So no, we actually have been, we've had some fabulous ideas from community members about how to link some of our Baltimore history coursework that we've been working on our Be More Me curriculum that, that really does move. And we've got a group of fabulous teacher leaders working on that this summer. So we've already had discussions about this idea of city as classroom. And I think I read that same article where it actually had a picture of children learning on the ferry, if I remember correctly, on the front of it. So no, we actually have, we know not every school space in the city, you know, lends itself to that, but there are places where we could use other buildings for spillover space. So some of our larger schools that are far more tightly populated, we might need other community spaces to be able to do that. But yes, the on, the outside piece, we have been looking at. And we do know that there, there are a number of school districts and frankly, institutions of higher, higher learning that are also looking at that. So, you know, again, we have schools where tents would provide some overflow space, they would provide outside teaching space. And so we are looking at that. How do we actually move some of frankly, the curriculum, which is what I was referencing earlier, outside? And we, we already have teachers who, you know, to your earlier point, are, are really good and knowledgeable about that already. And so, you know, that's a long-winded way of saying, yes, absolutely. Because we too have been following the research around the outdoor space. I've been talking to colleagues across the country who are looking into that. And I think this is really a time to be creative. I mean, one of the things that has been so encouraging is just the folks that are willing to lend their creativity throughout the city, be they students, which is why we need to get Anaya finally, you know, linked in, whether they're some of our expert teachers, whether they are, you know, principals or frankly, even community leaders who have really stepped up to provide this kind of support to our young people. And I agree with the council president, you know, this, this is a time to really see Baltimore shine and we can be safe and creative at the same time.
Thank you. Other questions from the committee?
Chairman Cohen, can I, can I ask one, one other question? I wanted to ask a question to both Dr. Santalisis and to our students around the area of transportation. So I wanted to go to the students first, but then afterwards, if Dr. Santalisis can just, for the, for the benefit of the audience, just kind of share with us the thoughts around, you know, transportation, once that, that phase comes in and, and what we are, you know, what we are planning, what we're thinking. But I wanted to ask the students, how do they typically travel to school? If they do take the MTA, when we move into a hybrid or, you know, you know, portion of returning to classrooms, what are, what are their thoughts, any concerns or even recommendations as it relates to how we can transport students back to school as, as safe as possible?
I'd like to answer that question. I take the bus from home to school. Occasionally, my mom would drive me, but most of the time it was me using the bus. One of the concerns that I have is if the schools will continue handing out the one-card bus to use, because I know that the, the buses at the beginning of the quarantine, they made it free for essential, you know, anything essential. And most of the buses were blocked from the front part of the bus, the majority had to come in from the back door and everyone had to have their mask on. So one of my concerns is about the one-card and if, uh, whether there will be more buses available, because I know from what I've experienced, many, many students take the bus to or from school. You know, the bus I take is the 22 and that bus is always packed after school and in the morning. So that was one of the, yeah, those are one of the, the concerns that you were able to fight.
And Anaya, did you have any comments before Dr. Santalisis gives hers? Did you want to speak to that, Dr. Santalisis?
Sure. I would just say, what Shira just described very vividly and concisely is, is the challenge that I have spoken about repeatedly throughout this crisis, that is actually one of the largest challenges. And that is because such a large percentage of our students, particularly our secondary students, rely on public transportation. The convergence of that reality with the, some of the moves and shifts within MTA to actually decrease service is, is, is going to be an incredible lifting challenge. And like I said, Shira hit it right in, on a bullseye, that that is going to be a challenge because we have routes that are already packed. And to now have reduced service in the face of already overtaxed, you know, bus lines and public transportations, it, it, you know, I've said many times before that transportation is the silent specter in this city
Yeah.
when it comes to education. And you know, Councilman, I've said this repeatedly and, and I have grave concern and really appreciate all of the advocacy and continued advocacy in this area because the threat of reducing service not only makes it more difficult for students to get to school, but it makes it less safe. Everything we know about social distancing, you know, it, it just does not work to reduce service during this time. So, you know, I would, I would actually highlight your question as a point of advocacy and a request for advocacy from the city council and all of our elected officials around the transportation needs of young people in the city.
Thank you, Dr. Santalisis. And Chairman Cohen, if I might, I'd love for, you know, this committee to, you know, call in Director Quinn from MTA. And we, we need to help our school system have that conversation to make certain that they are prepared and are going to provide the necessary resources, you know, for our students. Thank you, Dr. Santalisis. Thank you, Chairman Cohen.
Yeah, that's a great idea, Councilman Pinkett. Yeah, I, I think you're absolutely right. I mean, we know that this is, just like Dr. Santalisis said, this is a huge barrier for so many of our children. And again, during regular times, we know that children have hour and a half commutes in some cases, that multiple bus stops, that, you know, MTA has not always been a great partner to our young people in Baltimore. And I think you're absolutely right that we should invite them to really share how they are going to support bringing our young people back to school because that is critical. And if you can't get there, then you're not learning. Appreciate that. Anyone else from the council want to jump in? Seeing no one. All right. So thank you, Dr. Santalisis. We're now going to go to President DiMonte Brown, President of the Baltimore Teachers Union. Appreciate you being here with us, President Brown.
Hey, thank you, Councilman Cohen, for having me. Wanted to mention a couple of things about Baltimore Teachers Union's perspective as well as as well as the community members and students and parents and other union partners that we've spoken to. Firstly, we are still asking that our school board gives us a fully virtual start for the entire first semester. We believe that we need the entire first semester in order to properly prepare our buildings. And if we have that entire semester, we will have the time that we need to plan for distance learning, to improve it. We will have more time for professional development. We'll have more time to practice with the technology. And we'll also have more time to apply the feedback that our students have been giving us. You know, our students have been telling us that we need to make virtual learning more engaging. And, you know, a lot of times we focus on core subjects like English and math. However, in order to make learning more engaging, you know, they're asking us that we need to put our music teachers and art teachers and PE teachers and dance teachers in the forefront. Because those are the one, are the teachers that can create things like a musical performance, which is also learning. They can administer art therapy or some type of art activity. And you know, our PE teachers and our coaches, they could be running online conditioning clinics for our athletes. You know, we can connect, be able to attend conditioning to make it so you all go in to class. Because we know our student athletes definitely want to have access to conditioning, especially if they know it's a part of getting back on the team. Cause I was a student athlete, so I know that very well. And I worked when my coach made certain that our grades and class engagement was a part of us having an opportunity to continue on the team. Also, we are advocating and we would like everyone to advocate for childcare for our parents that are essential workers. We believe that we've grown accustomed to the school system providing several different services. And it's no secret that many parents rely on and get very excited around the age when their child becomes a school age child. Because now you can send them to school and it decreases your childcare cost. And I mean, the education is, is not even a conversation. That's the whole point of sending them. But the bonus is it decreases your childcare cost. And it decreases them going into your refrigerator all day. So, you know, however, we're to a point now where our buildings aren't safe for us to enter. And at the same time, we have to make certain that we still help our parents still decrease those childcare costs and still have that support they need for their students to win, for their children to engage in virtual learning. We also, and a part of that is we all, we all need to be advocating for an extension on rental evictions. You know, if everyone doesn't know, there's a rally in Annapolis on Friday at 11:00 AM to, so that we can advocate for people to not be evicted. Because we know that many of our parents and community members are essential workers. And despite the fact that we call them essential, we underpay them. You know, just in Baltimore City Public Schools, our food, our cafeteria workers are pretty important right now because we keep talking about food. However, we only pay us, I think they get paid like $14 an hour. So, you know, we have to really talk about these things because the same people that we're talking about are essential, are the same people that we are forcing to make decisions between putting their children in harm's way and being able to go to work and pay their rent. And that's not, and that's not fair. I think we could be much better than that. And I don't think that we should put all that weight on educators. Thirdly, we are very concerned that we are not having explicit and, you know, just more courageous conversations around the proper protective equipment we need and resources. My school secretaries are asking for death shields. They're 12 month employees, so they work all year round. And while, you know, most of us are working remotely, some of them are in our school buildings, some of them aren't. And so, you know, they want some guidelines because they have to engage with the public more than many other of our staff members. We're also very concerned, like you said earlier, about ventilation. However, we're just not concerned about school buildings. We're concerned about actually every worm in the building. Because many members of our public don't know that we have educators that actually teach in closets. We have sped teachers that do pull out in closets with no windows. And so we want to make certain that it's not just the building that has ventilation, but we need to be clear on what worms we're using, what worms aren't being used to make, to for us to feel comfortable that we're going to be able to be in a safe space when we enter school buildings. Also, we want to make certain that safety protocols don't result in criminalization of our youth. You know, oftentimes, adults have a very difficult time figuring out a way to manage our great geniuses. And they result, or they revert to calling the school police or suspensions or just things that are punitive and, and expose them more to criminalization instead of support. And I think one of the reasons that we revert to that way of thinking is because we don't have enough black male counselors, black male principals, black male educators, black male guidance counselors, black male school psychologists. So that way, we can, those, those people can intervene in situations when someone doesn't put their mask on. You know, maybe it doesn't need to be a struggle. Maybe it needs to be someone from the black community letting us to, you know, look, like we like, like, we, we like 50% more likely, you know, this is deeper than you just not listening to your teacher, blah, 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 you know, that's a different conversation that you have with a student about why it's important to have their mask, not just your teacher told you so. You don't want to kill anybody, put your mask on and we want to send you home or we want to do this. That's just, you know, that is our way of doing things, whether people want to admit it or not. And it's not a good way of doing things. And our children are asking us to be a lot more creative. And if we can't figure it out, as the student said earlier, just listen to them the same way they're asking people to listen to their teachers. Also, the MTA needs to be prepared. I've talked to the president of ATU and because, you know, I like talking to the actual people that are going to be directly impacted by the buses being full. And those are the actual drivers. Right now, the reason why MTA has reduced services is so that they can protect once again, the people that we deem essential and we underpay, which are the MTA bus drivers. And so they are saying that they are not prepared. They will not be ready in the beginning of, of October for students to get on their buses. They too need the entire first semester just to prepare buses. They, they're saying that conversations haven't even started about preparing a comprehensive plan for students to be on the buses. Right now, MTA has masks. I think that they have about 90,000 for their drivers and also people getting on the bus. But once the students get on the bus, that they will need much, 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 many more. Also, some of the MTA drivers are suggesting things like alternate routes. You know, like if the kid goes, if kids go to Merbo, have the bus go to Merbo. Kind of like how county schools have cheese buses that actually pick the kids up and take them to school. So, you know, and also we want to make sure, as, as far as resources, we need laptops or tablets and high speed internet for all students and staff. Just like so many people have said, but many people focus on the students having a laptop and high speed internet access. But, you know, we also would like people to also advocate for the actual teachers and PSRP's, our support staff, to have to execute the learning to have laptops or tablets and high speed internet access. And we also ask that when we talk about devices and high speed internet access, that we don't talk about it with this deficit way of thinking. You know, we're, we're thinking about it like, well, 70% of people are good. Let's just focus on the people that are not good. And if you don't have a device and if you don't have high speed internet, give us a call and let us know and we'll help you. You know, a lot of our families that don't have things, they're tired of always having to tell people what they don't have. And because I don't have it, you, I mean, it's kind of like charity sometimes. And people don't always want to be seen as charity. You know, if we want our students to have the education we all preach that we want our students to have, regardless of the pandemic, we should have, be able to provide us all of our students with a tablet or laptop, regardless if they have one in their home or not. We should be able to provide our, our teachers and all of our PSRP's, which are, which are paraprofessionals and school related personnel with laptops or tablets and high speed internet access because we're asking them to do work virtually. If you don't ask the chef to come work at a restaurant and expect him to bring a knife, that's nasty. You know, in any other industry, the boss provides the tools to do your job. They don't say, tell me what you don't have and I'll fill in the gaps. That's inappropriate. And unfortunately, people think that it's okay to do to teachers and educators and it's not. You know, for so often, people say just fill in the gaps. And my members are drawing a line here where we're saying, this is not one of those situations where you just tell us to fill in the gaps. Us filling in the gaps is what got us to this point where we're not ready. Because we've been depending on educators to fill in gaps that we know we shouldn't be depending on them to do. Also, we want to make certain that we're not just advocating for our members, that we're making certain to be advocate for our other union brothers and sisters. You know, a part of prepping, prepping our buildings is really going to be the cleanliness of our buildings, which we all know are, are already not great. And a part of why they're not great is because we're understaffed in our custodial staff, according to Local 44. You know, we need to be hiring more custodial staff that are unionized in Local 44. Because once again, these are community members that have continuity with our parents and our students all throughout high school, of all of my school. And even as a teacher, the two people I get to know is the school custodian and the school secretary. You know those two people, you're good, forever, you know? And so that's, that the, our custodial staff is really important. And then lastly, we want to make certain we're also taking care of our staff members that don't fit into virtual learning. We have our staff members, like our staff members at Cub, our school crossing guards. How can we use them? Right now, they're getting permission leave and we want to make certain they continue to get permission leave all throughout the first semester or as long as we have virtual learning. Cause we're going to need them because once again, we put our students in positions where they have to travel all across Baltimore City on the MTA to get to school. So we definitely are going to need our crossing guards. Maybe in the interim, they can still be out there with hotspots, providing more internet access until our school board can figure out how to pay for it. You know, so we just, you know, this is all out effort, you know? And we don't, what we want is that instead of people just reverting back to, you know, how can we do this in school buildings? You know, like you mentioned earlier, Councilman Cohen, how can we figure out how to meet all these needs, but not in a nasty unsafe school buildings? And I think that's where our way of thinking really, really needs to go. I'll just stop there.
Thank you, President Brown. Committee members, questions for President Brown? So one thing that you lifted up and was sort of on the tip of my tongue as well as Dr. Santa Lises was speaking, and then of course, as you were speaking, and then I know then that President Jessica Fauntleroy is also going to speak to is the issue of childcare. This has been clearly, really, really, really tough. And you articulated exactly to me what I've seen the challenge is, you have parents and they're trying to work, maybe they're working virtually, maybe not, but they're simultaneously then trying to take care of their own children, get their young people online, get them connected with their lessons. Dr. Santa Lises, have we thought as a school system, now that we are going to be going back virtually, have we thought about this question around childcare? And how we can support parents and families as we return in this virtual format?
No, I, I think it's a great question, Councilman Cohen. And I think one of the things that we're finding across the country and across the state as I speak with colleagues. And that is that our country is now seeing the need for our childcare system. And it has been woefully, right, under-resourced and it has been almost a stepchild. And now it is front and center like a lot of our challenges. So a couple of things, we have been in discussion with some city agencies about ways we might be able to partner in providing additional childcare spaces for, for families around the city. And so we begun that Chief Perkins Cohen has started some of that discussion already. But I, I will just say very forthrightly, you know, one of the challenges in this is, you know, resources. So there are other agencies that are also dealing with resource challenges. But yes, we recognized very early, we, we started talking to partners, but it, it is absolutely an issue. And, you know, State Superintendent Salmon, you know, has been very clear that while, you know, school, while she clearly, you know, State Department has oversight over childcare in terms of, you know, actually authorizing it. You know, schools are not equipped to do full-time childcare outside of, right, the, that day. We, we have creative partnerships with people. And I think during this time, we're looking into that. But almost every agency we've talked to has said they can't fully, you know, they can't be solely responsible for the kind of childcare, the quantity of childcare that we need. And, you know, I think to, you know, to the same point, you know, when we look at who has actually been out working and who has not had a choice, right? Those are some of the folks, and we see in terms of what's going on in New York City. Those are the folks who again, are most directly impacted because they don't have flexible schedules, right? They don't have, you know, the, the option of working from home. And so when you have to do that, you, it, it definitely taxes the system. So, you know, just to say, yes, we, we recognize it's an issue. We've been working to try to comb stuff together with various partners. But very forthrightly, we know it's not going to be enough to take care of the entire city.
Yeah, and this is just going to be a huge challenge. Another area where I think we've all got to be all in. And we are going to have to look toward creative partnerships. And I just want to volunteer, not on behalf of my colleagues, but at least for myself. And I think for this committee, if there are some ways that we can be helpful in supporting needs around childcare, again, just, you know, knowing from my own family and from so many of my neighbors and my constituents' families, just how challenging it really is right now. And how much juggling sort of across socioeconomic lines, across race. I mean, it's just, it, it of course falls, the burden falls the hardest on families that can't afford childcare. And I think all families right now are struggling in their own way to try to figure stuff out. As a way that our committee can be helpful in this endeavor, we would love to be there because it's certainly something I'm thinking a lot about. And whether it's activating nanny shares in a creative way. I mean, I don't, you know, but we gotta, we gotta work together on it.
No, I, I, I agree and we absolutely, you know, will, will support. I do think, you know, to your point, you know, it's just, it's interesting when, when certain groups of people have childcare challenges, right? It becomes a major issue. But as I have said to folks, there have been essential workers who from the beginning have had childcare challenges.
That's right.
And now that is hitting certain classes of people, now it is suddenly a huge issue. now it is suddenly a huge issue. But as somebody who had to, you know, speak with food and nutrition workers who so like valiantly, right, were coming out to work, who were doing that, but who also had to wonder who was going to take care of their child. You know, we just, to your point, we have to be careful that we don't surface the issues just when it impacts people of means. We have to surface the same issues when it impacts everybody. And I think to your point, you know, we're more than willing to partner, but it is a larger community issue.
President Brown, back to you. You know, I'm thinking about what I think Anaya had raised earlier, which is that our teachers are also struggling, whether it's sort of the emotional impact of the death of George Floyd and so many other deaths, whether in police custody, within our city, outside of police custody, whether it's the pandemic itself and the coronavirus. You know, we know that this has been really hard on teachers. And I hear from teachers all the time who are dealing with complex grief, who are deeply concerned about students. Just from your perspective, could you share some of the challenges that you're hearing really on a social, emotional level from your members as well as anything you need for, from us or from the school system to better support?
Well, I think that the biggest thing is we need to be heard. And, you know, we appreciate that people think of us as superheroes, but even superheroes have feelings. And I think that, you know, when people think about all these other groups, when they say think about childcare, when they think about rental eviction and all this stuff, somehow teachers are like, not in that group. We are in that group, you know? As a teacher, my BGE got cut off. As a teacher, I couldn't pay my rent either. And some teachers also can't afford childcare, you know? And so when we hear people talk about these things, it's two mutually exclusive things. Like, in order for us to solve all these problems, we need you guys to dismiss all that stuff that you have going on and go back and teach so that way we, all of our problems are taken care of. And then we're like, but what I'm supposed to do with my kid now? And, you know, also, you know, even when we were in school buildings, depending on what school you work in, you can lose a kid any given day and you're still expected to teach the next day. No one comes and asks, do I need your help? The onus is on you. You know, they say you can call our employee assistance program. Like, that's so robotic and programmatic. Like, when people are in like the midst of grief and like, I just lost a kid yesterday and I'm trying to teach because I'm scared to death to not come to work because who knows who they're going to put in my classroom and how that's going to change the whole climate in my classroom? And by the way, I don't trust that people are going to have some type of healing with my students the next day knowing they lost a classmate, you know? And so now, you know, that was already an issue. And now here we are, you know, it's still an issue. And I, so I, our, our social, emotional needs as educators haven't changed. You know, it's just that we finally have had an opportunity to pause and not have to put them two aside for once and to be able to be, to lift our voices and say, hey, we're people too. And, you know, we kind of care about ourselves and our families and all of those things too, and yours, you know? And so we would love to have, you know, more, you know, after, after death, like, can we have a healing town hall, you know, instead of don't talk to the students about it? Or just do some like circle where you already gave us predetermined themes to talk about, you know? If we're going to talk about restorative practices, we want to be involved too, you know? And not just when someone has after-school detention and you want us to ask the restorative practices questions on the card. Like, you have to change the whole culture of a school in order to really take those type of practices on. You know, we want to be, you know, have more time to build relationships with our students. So that way, you know, there's some of our educators, you know, that don't have that extra privilege. I consider myself having a privilege because I'm black and I'm from Baltimore. And my students already know, don't play with me. And secondly, I know the vernacular. I know all their little slang they talking. So whatever plans happening in the back of my classroom, I got you. Stop it all. But when you're not from here, you know, they could be planning the whole like, you don't even know what's going on. They're talking about, you know, babies, chicken boxes, you know, dummy, what's up, all types of stuff. You're like, I don't even know what's going on, you know? And so because many of our educators don't have those staff privilege, because as you guys know, about 60% of our educators, you know, I believe, are white, you know? And I want to say about 70% of our staff is not from Baltimore. So, you know, of our teachers aren't from Baltimore. So we really have to give educators the space just to get to know each other and Baltimore and their students and families and heal together and not create this division. You know, when we talk about parents, we're also talking about teachers. When we talk about community members, we're also talking about PSRP's. When we talk about, you know, people that are getting evicted, we're also talking about our school secretaries, our school bus transportation aides, our cafeteria workers, you know? And so that's what I would say about, you know, our emotional health. And also, and, you know, one of the things that I want, you know, is, is we're overworked, to put it simply. And, you know, a lot of times people ask about our emotional health and it's a slap in our face because it's like you're asking about it, but you ain't caught down those hours of expectation or any of the above. So, you know, that's what we have to say about that.
Thank you. Any other council members before we go to President Fontleroy?
Chairman Cohen, I had one other question for Dr. Santalisis. Going back to what it looks like when, when school reopens or when we go virtually. And maybe she may have said it and I missed it, but I'm curious to know how many hours or what portion of a day will, were the students actually being in a virtual environment?
That is, that's a great question, Councilman. Actually, we will be rolling out some of those looks at our upcoming board meetings. So we'll be able to get some kind of view of what a student day, teacher day might look like. We have been in conversation with our union colleagues as, as part of some negotiation discussion. But we will absolutely have proposals for that coming out. What we do know is that parents have been very, very clear that, you know, 30 minutes, and again, we did the best we could. We had teachers who were, who were working overtime, but that there was, there was a need for some consistent expectations about how much time young would be in learning, consistent, because there was just variation. And that's what happens when you have a crisis. You know, nobody intends for there to be that variation. But one of the things we heard loud and clear is that parents and families want to know what to expect, how long my child will actually be engaged in learning with their teacher, not just kind of completing assignments. And that's why, you know, to the earlier points, it's up to the district to provide teachers with the support where they can do that. And that's why some teachers are saying, hey, look, we're not waiting to, until the contract days. You've got to give us something now to be able to do that. But our target is to be able to roll that out so that families are clear. Teachers deserve that level of clarity as well. And, you know, so it's not just families. But yeah, teachers deserve that clarity as well. But that will be part of what we are rolling out. But again, you know, parents have definitely asked, as well as some teachers, have asked for some of that consistency so that we don't have what we had in the spring, which was some children, some students only having, say, 30-minute check-in twice a week visually, and then the rest was posted assignments, right? Teachers who were able to, and again, sometimes it wasn't their, you know, it wasn't their fault, but that's why we've got to really invest. And that's why we had some of those professional development days at the end of the year. You know, we had over 10,000 educators log in on the day that we had additional virtual professional development because teachers themselves were saying, you know, we need more support in doing that. But the goal is to be able, and parents were very clear. They want to know exactly how much time their young people will be engaged with their teachers online. And, and that's a place that, you know, I've committed we'll be able to communicate to families.
Thank you.
Sure.
All right. Again, thank you, President Brown. Appreciate your advocacy on behalf of both our educators as well as other staff and also students and families. Thanks for your work. All right, turning to President Jessica Fontleroy from the Parent Community Advisory Board.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Councilman Cohen and all esteemed guests that are on the panel. As Councilman Cohen said, my name is Jessica Fontleroy and I'm a mother. I reside in the Emerson Village community and I have the best councilman, Chris Burnett, who's always available and ready to assist. Anyway, I have three children in city schools. I have an elementary schooler, a middle schooler, and a high schooler. I am a member of the Parent and Community Advisory Board for city schools where I currently serve as interim chairperson. P-CAB advises the city school CEO and the Board of Commissioners about how parents, families, the communities, and educators can collaborate to help youth succeed. Our mission is to ensure the voice of parent and community is heard and influential and demonstrates equity and inclusion in the development and implementation of policies and procedures for the benefit of all students attending city schools. So myself and a lot of other parents around the city are very concerned about the planning for the virtual reopening of schools and about equitable considerations for every child in every school and every zip code. COVID-19 has disproportionately impacted the Baltimore community, particularly Black and the Latino community, the working class, and the elderly due to health disparities, chronic health conditions, and lack of access to quality healthcare. These health disparities during COVID-19 reflect important patterns of inequity. First, minority communities have had a likely, a higher likelihood of contracting the virus because we live in urban communities and because a lot of us are at the forefront, still working during this pandemic. Like myself, I'm actually still working. As far as virtual learning is concerned, in order for it to be successful from a parent perspective, we need to keep the information about COVID and health disparities at the front of any type of recovery planning as parents and caregivers are represented in every group of people that are impacted, including elderly. So there needs to be a comprehensive parent orientation for parents of all educational levels regarding virtual learning. This parent orientation should be held on various platforms, including social media, CHAM TV, and even in public parks and spaces in various communities like San-Town Winchester or Clifton Park, where the digital divide exists, where families can social distance and be educated on what the expectations are for digital learning, how programming will be set up, and how it'll be scheduled. As far as the digital divide is concerned, there needs to be no-cost or low-cost high-speed internet for students and families and financial need so that they all can have access to virtual learning. As a working mother, I can identify with parents that are very concerned about being able to work and financially provide for their children while also wishing that they were able to constantly supervise and assist their children while they participate in live virtual learning. It is my hope that there will be opportunities for parents who worked during the day to have other options for free or low-cost or subsidized childcare so that children are in safe spaces supervised by adults while their parents work because work schedules haven't changed and families still have to pay their living expenses. Without assistance with childcare, financial stresses that have already increased due to COVID-19-related layoffs and budget cuts will continue to increase in families and impact the safety of children. There also needs to be resources made available to assist parents and caregivers with rental and mortgage assistance and continued assistance with food access and food insecurity. There also needs to be additional mental health assistance as there has been a spike in homicides in the city that have occurred since April or May. And some of it can be attributed to the lack of income, job layoffs, instability, as well as evictions since COVID. I actually saw someone being evicted on my block, maybe about a month ago. And this all happened prior to George Floyd becoming a national headline, but still keeping that in mind and providing assistance on that. Also, there needs to be opportunities for parents and caregivers to log on to lessons that are pre-recorded with their children. If they work during the time of live streams, there must be true collaborative planning that includes parents when it comes to virtual learning and reopening so that our children can be successful.
Thank you, President. Thank you so much, President Fontleroy.
No problem.
Truly appreciate your perspective, as always. Any questions for President Fontleroy? Dr. Santalisis, picking up where Jessica had left off, I thought that was a really interesting idea around supporting parents with the digital learning, town hall, in-person, you know, dealing with the reality of the digital divide. How are we thinking as a school system about supporting parents in the critical role that they are going to need to play as we head back to virtual school in the fall?
No, it was a great question. And I actually was, was starting to write something in the chat when you called on me. So I'm glad that you, that you did that. And, you know, I want to, I really do want to thank President Fontleroy because throughout this, I mean, I would say since April, was that our first meeting, President Fontleroy? That P-CAB has just been invaluable.
We've been meeting so much.
I know.
Yes.
But you all, that's right. It was in April. I thought so. I just want to give a shout out to President Fontleroy, all of P-CAB. What I appreciate about them is they bring the real questions, the hard questions, but they are true constructive partners and they don't, they don't let us off. And so even as President Fontleroy was talking about the needs for parents, you know, this is why I say that there was a split in, in families, you know, wanting absolutely safe environments and being able to see some of that, but also this very real concern that our, that all of our parents, our Black and Brown parents, our parents who are working two and three jobs, they care just as much about the education of their, of their children. And so when President Fontleroy referenced the orientation, I was giving a big shout on that because one of the things that we are planning to do with the extra time, if the board does in fact approve a late, a later start on September 8th, is we are working with Under Chief High Cupboard's leadership and her team, working with school principals to be able to help support them and their teams to provide the kind of orientation onboarding that President Fontleroy has identified as a real need. And this cuts across neighborhoods. And I will just tell you, yes, I am the CEO, but I am also a Baltimore City School parent. And I had times, I mean, you know, this is why I tell parents, do not feel badly because, and I think I said this to the P-CAB board as well, you know, I- because, and I think I said this to the P-CAB board as well, you know, I had ti- I had a hard time navigating some of the platforms and taking some of, you know, my students, you know, my girls' directions and then having to do that while I had three Zoom calls going on. So one of the things that we are committed to doing, we've looked at doing is working with some um, some of our partners who really have much more experience, like two decades worth of experience in more robust um distance learning and providing some of those workshops for our families so that they actually have um access. We want families, as I said earlier, to know what their children's schedules are, right? To know um how much time they're going to be spending in what environment so that it is easier for them to navigate. And then we will be continuing um our hotline and and really increasing that. Um, but I think that idea about the orientation is key. Um, it is, it is one of the things we've worked with our partners. We got really great reviews for a lot of the video lessons. And so we really want to move that to the next level um to have uh videos that parents can access to actually help um increase, excuse me, um their knowledge of how to support their students. And then we heard from some of our high school parents, again, during our summer school. Um, we've heard from some families that have said, you know, even just the technology maneuvering, right? You know, uh, we have parent, you know, when when parents went, a lot of our parents went to school, you know, not everybody had a laptop. Not everybody had a Chromebook. And so how do, how do they navigate that? But we, we definitely heard that, and I think that orientation piece is key. And what we are finding is that when parents actually get to see some of the spaces, when parents see uh what the social distancing looks like, when parents see that, yes, there is um soap in the dispenser, right? And that buildings um are being cleaned and that we are increasing the number of custodians in certain spaces. Um, there actually is a comfort. Uh, but at the same time, um, they're really, we really are beefing up um how we're thinking about creatively some of those spaces for smaller numbers where parents can come and 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 get far more in person. We we heard from some of our parents that actually being able to come into the building, speak with the principal, um, was much more accessible to them than having to do everything online all the time. And so this, this awareness that not everybody is, not every family is going to immediately log in and know what to do. So we'll be continuing some of the things that were successful. Um, but that point about the orientation um is key. So I'm going to quote you on that, President Fontleroy, um, as I talk to school teams because we had actually started floating that idea. And we heard from a number of school communities that did kind of similar virtual town halls and things like that, that that there was a a really great uptick, but we need to make it far more prevalent across the city. Does that answer your question, Councilman Cohen?
Yes. Um, and again, want to echo Dr. Santa Lises in thanking President Fontleroy uh for your advocacy on behalf of parents. Um, your voice definitely really mattered as we were trying to figure out uh the laptop and the Chromebook distribution and trying to move uh some money from the youth fund into that work. Um, having your and P-CAB's advocacy and perspective was really, really, really important. Um, and just keeping parents, um, keeping that parent voice in the conversation publicly, I think, is critical. Um, so again, thank you for your advocacy. Thank you for your testimony tonight. Um, and thanks for being a really great partner on behalf of our children. Uh, with that, we are going to head to testimony from the public. Um, I do want to also recognize uh Taylor Curry, who is here representing Councilmember Clark, um, as well as, I think I missed in the opening, uh Nina Themelis from the mayor's office. Um, welcome to you both as well. All right. So we are now going to head toward community testimony. If we could just get that slide up um from Council Services. Jennifer, would you mind reading the slide? I'm not able to see it um in and sharing the process for testimony? Uh, still not seeing the slide. One second, folks. Apologies, this is uh wonky. Um, given the uh strange world that we are now in, um, having to do all of this virtually. All right, I'm just going to figure this out. So we, the way we're going to do this, there are a number of folks who are on the line. Uh, I'm gonna call on you. And if you are interested in testifying, uh, just go ahead and start. Um, I see uh Joe Del Balsso. Uh, Joe, are you with us? And would you like to testify?
Joe is CHOM TV.
Got it. All right. Uh, I see Antoine Banks from Comcast. Mr. Banks, would you like to testify? Um, Mr. Banks. All right, we might come back to you. I see uh board president, Chania. Jennifer, would you mind muting your, there there seems to be a little bit of feedback coming through. Thanks. Um, President Chania, would you like to uh, or Board Chair Chania, would you like to offer testimony?
I uh, I'm not certain that you can hear me.
Yep, we can hear you.
Uh, I don't have a testimony to give. I just want to thank the folks who did uh uh present this evening. And just to let you know that the board has been, has also been working very closely with the uh Dr. Santa Lises and staff, uh, teachers and the rest of the community. Uh, and we will continue to be supportive. Most of the issues I think people have brought forth, and we will continue to try to work with all of our partners uh to ensure that we have an excellent uh year coming up and that we uh we provide what both our teachers and staff need as well as our students. So thank you for the chance to speak.
Thank you so much, Board Chair Chania. Thanks for being with us and for all your work. Um, we have Ann Coy, who's on my staff. Uh, thanks, Ann, for helping to facilitate the hearing. Uh, hearing her. We have Adam. Um, Adam, would you like to testify?
Yes, hello. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, thank you, Councilman uh Cohen. Um, it's for your time. Uh, so my name is Adam Boumadd. Uh, I'm a first generation Moroccan American, uh born and raised in Baltimore. I'm also the founder and director of Project Waves, a community-based organization focused on advocating for and providing internet access to communities across Baltimore City. Um, so following the historic repeal of net neutrality by the FCC in 2018, Council President Jack Young introduced a resolution which ensured internet access as a basic human right. This resolution sought to explore municipal broadband, which would enable residents to be connected to high-speed internet across Baltimore, specifically being connected to the city's 54-mile fiber ring. Several municipal broadband hearings followed. The resolution also resulted in a contractual agreement between CTC Technology and Energy and the City of Baltimore to study the role the city could play in providing municipal broadband. The data resulting from this study was slated to be released in spring of 2019. Tonight, I encourage council members to release the data provided from that feasibility study and to commit to resuming hearings surrounding municipal broadband implementation in Baltimore so we can explore more robust options for historically underserved communities who've lived on the wrong side of the digital divide for decades, well before the COVID-19 pandemic began. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Adam, and thank you for the work that you've been doing with Project Waves. It's really, really impressive. And I think uh for those of us that have been advocating alongside of you all and the Digital Equity Coalition and the students from Somos, I see an enormous amount of value in our city beginning to reopen the conversation around municipal broadband and what it would look like to really move the internet from being a private luxury to a public utility because we know, and this virus has once again elevated the importance of being able to have access to Wi-Fi. Um, that it is essential in the truest sense. Um, so again, appreciate your work and your advocacy. Um, and point well taken. Um, I also see Shannon. Uh, Shannon, would you like to testify?
I would, thank you. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for having this meeting and making, making it accessible to the community. My concern and my question was going to be on broadband, uh, some of which was just addressed by the gentleman before me. Where we are right now with with COVID, this is an opportunity for the city to really be able to reinvent itself and move education forward. I guess my question is, both from the standpoint of uh the board itself and the teachers union, what would you like the community to do? Where do you need the most help, where people can be the most helpful?
Thank you. And Shannon, could you say, just for your record, could you state your full name?
Sure. Pastor Shannon Wright.
Great. Thank you very much. Uh, President Brown, do you want to uh, do, do you want to answer that in terms of what the community can do to support around uh digital equity?
You know it. Um, so thank you, Shannon, for asking. Um, and I would say firstly, I, well, I heard, I think I heard that you were a pastor. And I've been having these thoughts around us uh organizing uh churches to use the church bands to uh maybe put a laptop in there or something or a hotspot and park it uh outside or just uh open up the church's Wi-Fi and take off the past school so everyone can use it. Here in Baltimore, we have a church on like every corner. So if the church has Wi-Fi, say, open it up, that would be helpful until we could get, you know, either our school board to pay for high-speed internet access or for, you know, us to make it uh a, a, a public utility. Uh, but we need something right this second. Um, in addition to that, I would ask you to help us encourage our school board to pay for the high-speed internet access that we are asking for and also join a fight with our Somos students and other advocates to push uh Comcast and other providers to uh just provide free high-speed internet access. Um, also, we uh need our community members at our school board meetings and also reaching out to our school board members to let them know how you want them to vote on certain issues. Um, and we need our community members to help us figure out these uh childcare collaboratives um and tech support for our students that are learning at home. You know, our parents are asking that, you know, they don't just want a one body um with their student. They want someone that can really help them with their learning while they're at work. Uh, we need our community members um advocating for employers. You know, we keep talking about how people don't make enough money to even get childcare, but no one's talking about how we need to be advocating for people to get paid more instead of us accepting the fact that people get paid not even enough to uh uh get childcare for their uh students. And maybe, and children, and maybe we should also be thinking about how employers and the school system can work together with scheduling. You know, we, we, we're saying that while people at work, school is happening, you know, so maybe we need to think through what that looks like. And that doesn't always mean now we want to ask teachers to work from five to 10, right? No, we want to ask the people, you know, like the Amazon uh big wig that's making, what is he, a trillionaire? To maybe uh re-change around some of those uh working parents' hours and ask them, what is your child's uh school schedule? And put me on a schedule. It's not when my child is school, is in school. You know, uh, also asking for increased wages so people can pay their rent, can save enough so when three months comes around and they lose their job, they have enough money to, for a cushion. You know, we have to stop accepting that people only make this much money and what can we do about it and not paying people uh pennies. Uh, so we need a lot of advocacy and we need courageous advocacy, not around the regular, normal things that everything since, you know, everybody feels good about and is sensationalized. We need people to be very courageous and say the things that other people won't say. And once again, thank you for asking uh how you can support us. And you can go to BaltimoreTeachers.org and you can read about our Safe Not Silence campaign, and it'll tell you much more on how you can support us.
Great. Thank you so much, President Brown. Um, Dr. Santa Lises, do you also want to share how community can support around digital equity?
Sure. I mean, I I would just, you know, I I would continue to say what I've been saying, and that is one. Um, just a big thank you for the advocacy around um public access to broadband as a utility, like that, that piece. And I think sometimes um having a narrow, pointed focus um really helps. And that is one that really is a linchpin. And I think that you have a lot of agreement across organizations, um, across, I think, every panelist um on this call has referenced it. Um, it is not a minor thing, um, even when we get into internet access, right? We have young people who have um, you know, data costs. And if you have a data cost, then the speed of your internet is different, right? And and it really does severely hamper. So I think the continued advocacy uh for community broadband, expanding those voices um across the city, across sectors of the city, um, continues to be really powerful movement. I have referred a number of people to the growing movement in Cleveland, Ohio around this, where you have the Chamber of Commerce, you have the, you have the school system, you have the faith community, all coming together um to really push on uh this idea. And then the other piece, um, we really um do know that our young people um are going to need um support in uh different ways of learning in new spaces because school buildings are closed. I had had um emails from members of the community, um, some who themselves cannot be out, who who are saying, you know, would love to do some virtual tutoring um if necessary, right? Would love to, you know, um, help with meal distribution um if that's needed. And I think that those are places um where young people see um the difference. It's it's part of why we're really emphasizing this um Baltimore college student um and Black member organizations um coming around our young people in in a mentoring relationship, not just to kind of check in once in a while. Um, and I think that there are similar models um that could leverage members of the faith community um and others around that. So, so those are some ways um that we could, and even frankly, being willing to support families who are trying to navigate what it means um to manage your child's virtual schooling. Um, so those, those are some ways. And, you know, I would agree with um with many, um, you know, many of the things that have already been said around access for Wi-Fi. um, you know, many of the things that have already been said around access for Wi-Fi and other things.
Great, thank you. Anyone else from the public that is looking to testify? If you could just introduce yourself now? All right. Hearing note takers. Um, I want to thank all of the panelists tonight. Uh, Dr. Santalisis, President Brown, and President Fauntleroy, as well as, of course, and last but not least, our great student speakers, um, Anaya and Yashira, uh, thank you for leading us off. Uh, thank you also to my colleagues, um, and all the staff that made this virtual hearing possible. Uh, you know, like we said at the beginning, we are all in this together, and this is truly a rallying cry and a moment for us as a city to wrap our arms around our children and make sure that in this real crisis moment that we are sticking together and fighting it out for them, um, and for each of our families. So, again, appreciate everyone. That will conclude this Education and Youth Committee hearing on the reopening of city schools. Um, thank you to the public for tuning in, thank you to Charm TV for broadcasting, and uh, hope everyone as well. All right, bye-bye.